Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, September 9th, 2019. First on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes.
Motion to adjutant.
Second.
For minutes of the meeting of October 26th. We have a first and a second. All those in favor? I see nothing under communications. So we will welcome the middle school students Maggie Eli and Sarah Donnelly and Ms. Bond to the podium, please.
I feel like this was almost done on purpose. I have to bring that down every time. Let me just take one second. We've been here before. I think this is one of the best nights when we come to school committee because we're just bringing the cream of the crop and this year is absolutely no exception. I'd like to introduce Maggie Eli and Sarah Donnelly and just give you a very quick background. Maggie and Sarah have both been on the high honor roll since fifth grade, which is a huge accomplishment. They are both members of our National Junior Honor Society. They both are members of our student government. Maggie is playing volleyball right now at the high school and is a coach, I'm sorry, well, probably a coach, almost the coach, of the women's ba- of the girls' basketball team over at the high school. She works with Ms. Mitchell and Sarah is involved in soccer at a number of levels. And I'm very, very proud to congratulate them on going to Mass Maritime and having what I hope is a wonderful experience this summer. Dr. Cron, they're all yours.
Can you tell us a little bit? Just tell us a little bit, what was your favorite thing?
My favorite thing was probably the classes. It was different from what we like take here in Rockland. One class I took was a robotics class and we actually like made underwater vehicles and we got to like go to the pool and like test them out. So that was definitely like one of the highlights of my trip.
Fun.
One of my favorite parts of the camp was meeting new friends that I still talk to today and it was nice to meet new people with the same interests as I have.
Very cool. Well, we are very proud of you. So I know the school committee will probably have some questions for you, but I'd like to award you. This is to certify that Margaret G. Ellie has awarded the certificate for participation in the Advanced Studies in Leadership Summer Program at the Massachusetts Maritime Academy on this ninth day of September 2019. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And this certifies that Sarah L. Donnelly is awarded the certificate for participation in the Advanced Studies in Leadership Summer Program at the Massachusetts Maritime Academy on this ninth day of September 2019. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're very, very proud of you.
I encourage you upon the podium.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Please.
Come on over.
There's two roses and one bone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Do you have any questions? Mr. Mills has, if you get the certificate, you have to put up with the questions. Come on over. It's okay.
Quick question on the robotics, okay? Did you, did you wind up programming the robotics?
Yes.
Did you actually do it, what you wanted to do? Did you use particular language?
Particular computer language.
How did you use computer language?
How did you program it?
Oh, so we used like little like, so we wired the robot. We built like the frame out of like PVC pipes.
Okay.
And we kind of wired it to like a, to like box and we had like controls that like-
And you had a control on the box?
Yes, we did.
So it wasn't, that you, you had a wireless type of device there? You had wires connected to it?
We did, yes.
Wireless doesn't work underwater.
Yeah, sometimes. Put a device on it.
Yeah, neat. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Congratulations to your parents, too.
I'm sorry, I'm not letting you out Maggie without a question. Was it what you expected? Was it more, obviously more than you expected?
Yes, definitely more than I expected.
What would be a piece of advice to the kids that will go next year? What would you tell them?
Definitely that like the first week is not, like the first half of the first week is not the best. It like starts off slow, but once you like start meeting people and like start building those like connections with them and have like friends, it definitely gets a lot better and you like want to be with them each week and like can't wait to go back. So it like takes time to get into it.
To build into it.
Yes.
Very cool.
Do you get to see the military part of it all or is that not prevalent when you're there?
We did see some stuff. We saw like the Kennedy boat.
Oh, you did?
That was there, yes.
That was my second question. Were you able to get on the boat at all? No.
Um, I wasn't personally.
Her group did.
Her group did.
Good.
So like different classes got to go on.
Okay, thanks.
Sarah, what would your advice be?
Um, yeah, I agree with Maggie. The first half was really hard because I didn't know many people except for Maggie obviously, but through my classes and my electives, I got to meet new people and I made those connections and I hang out with them all the time.
Awesome.
What, let's talk classes and electives, ladies and guys.
My elective was be your own author, so we did a lot of writing, storytelling and sharing with our peers.
Um, my like elective humanities class was improv, so that was really fun because I like met new friends and it was really, really fun because you just like, like I don't act, I'd never acted before, but I thought it was a fun class and once I met friends, you like, it was really fun every day.
Great.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Doug Lapp, Rockland's new town administrator. Welcome, Mr. Lapp.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. That is a tough act to follow going after the two girls. I'm familiar with the ASLP program and I think that's great that you guys did it. The town that I came from sends students there as well, so that's excellent. But again, my name's Doug Lapp. I just wanted to come in and introduce myself. I've met some of you before, I haven't met all of you. I thought I'd just briefly explain like, you know, my background. I originally worked in New York. I worked in the New York State Capitol for a while. Came to Massachusetts, worked in Boston with state government there and I was the assistant town manager for the town of Sandwich for the last fourteen and a half years or so. So I have a lot of municipal experience and in particular, I think one of the things that I was really proud of in Sandwich was a really close working relationship we had with our school department. It was capital projects and school safety initiatives, a lot of things like that. So I know that's going to carry forward here. I've had a number of excellent meetings already with Dr. Cron and Jane. Probably four or five times, I think, we've met in just the two months that I've been here and I feel very confident that we're already off to a great start. And you know, my board has made it clear when they hired me, you know, that a strong working relationship with the school department's important and that was one of the things that actually attracted me to Rockland was just seeing the level of community support with the schools. So I just wanted to come in and say hello, introduce myself. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Again, I've only been here two months, so I may not have any answers, but I'm here if there's anything you'd like to ask me.
Well, welcome. Thank you for coming. And we, I can say I am looking forward to working with you as well. I think that it's, the town is growing in a positive fashion now and we appreciate you being here and helping us get there. So I know it's been easier on our end for you to be up there with your team, too. So we appreciate that.
Don't be afraid to call upon us either individually or through the superintendent. Anything that you think we could be helpful with, we'd be very happy to.
I appreciate that and obviously with this, you know, the large school building project that you're proposing, that's, that's significant. That's significant anywhere in the state and so I, you know, look forward to playing my, my part in trying to help that be successful.
We're, we're unique. I think our town's unique in the sense of people who are on our board of selection, people who are on our school committee are, the vast majority of us came through here. You know, I, I graduated from Rockland. Dick graduated from Rockland. Jill graduated from Rockland. Tom graduated from Rockland.
Years ago.
Emily graduated from Rockland. Mr. Mullin, Mr. O'Laughlin. So it's a, you know, we, we like to have things working that way and have you say, you, part of the reason you were drawn here was to have that relationship is definitely something that we're happy to hear because it makes all our lives significantly easier and we all want what's best for this town, be it on your side of the parking lot or our side of the parking lot, as they say. So I, I look forward to being able to work together with everybody and keeping things going in the right direction. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Could I just ask you, where do you live now?
I still live in Sandwich.
Okay, so that's a hike.
So I have, I have two, I have two sons. The oldest, I'll just say the oldest, I just dropped off at college two weeks ago and my younger one is a sophomore, so he has three years to go. My wife works in Boston, so Rockland geographically makes sense, so three years from now when my younger one is off to college, then we'll, we'll see where we're at, but for now I got-
What college did you drop your son off at?
He's at Emory University in Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay, good.
Both my sons went through the ASLP program, so I'm very familiar with it and they had a similar reaction the first week or so. They were, they were a little iffy, but they didn't have the same maybe, what's the right word, intellectual focus that you did with the robotics because their favorite part was the big Gumby suit where you, where you jump in the canal, you know, so. But anyways, I digress. He's at Emory.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Sandwich is a nice area, yeah.
It is.
But is it, yeah, well, you're going against the traffic. Yeah.
It's not too bad.
Yeah, it's not too bad, no.
Except on Fridays.
Yeah, wow, that would slow down.
But more importantly, you're from New York and now you're here for 14 years. Are you a Red Sox or Yankees fan?
Yeah. I'll say this. I, I've lived in, I've, I've lived on Cape Cod for 20 years. I went to college undergrad at UMass Amherst. I got my masters at UMass Boston, so I'm all Red Sox.
Correct.
I'll just say that.
Well, then you can come back.
All right. Very good.
All right.
Thank you for having me and don't hesitate to let me know if I can do anything for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Lapp. On to Dr. Cron's superintendent report.
Thank you. I'm going to take a pass because everything I need to talk about is on the agenda for later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Let's go on to the reports, the school newsletters for September. We have Esten School, Jefferson Memorial Park, the middle school, obviously, and the high school. These are newsletters, not financial, so we don't need to make a motion, correct? Okay.
But colorful and very informative.
Right.
Correct. I like the color.
So I wanted to just comment on the high schools newsletter. They have the new freshman mentoring program that grade 11 and 12 now mentor the freshman grades, freshman students, I should say, and I was going to quickly try to read these names and not mess them up, but I think that it's the coolest thing to know that the upper grade levels are sort of stepping up to help up, help the lower grade levels. So I'm just going to read these quickly. Taylor Anzavino, Jed Benner Quarki, sorry, Katie Buckley, Lauren Bueker, Matthew Brusisi, Maria Siano, Lauren Dracchio, Taylor Tyler, I'm sorry, Gambon, Maddie Geir, who's here with us, Melanie Harris, Grace Henry, Tyler Johnson, Hannah McCarskey, Elizabeth McGaffigan, Sarah McLellan, Joseph Nugent, Zachary Offron, Athia Olson, Hannah Rich, Colin Rogers, Zachary Webb, Hannah Wiley, and Julia Yaden. And I just think this is exciting and it's cool to look, to know that that's what we're doing and we're growing together.
What I also think is impressive is, as you read the names, we've seen most of these kids here-
Most of these, that's why I was, you're spot on, Mike.
Multiple times.
Exactly.
You know, in the three years I've been here, I'm like, oh, yep, Maddie's been here a couple times, Tyler's been here a couple times, Hannah, yep, okay, yep.
I agree with you.
And it's great to see that because, you know, that could be the two young ladies that we just had-
Right.
Down the road-
Correct.
Could be doing the same thing in a couple of years, so.
Spot on.
And maybe about 10 years, they'll be sitting in your seat. No, I'll be glad.
Getting deep, getting deep. All right, on to the next thing. But yes, Mr. Graffalo, that was exactly my point, is that we know them and like you have elementary school kids, I have middle school kids, but the fact that we know so many of these students is-
Plus, I love the T-shirts.
You love the T-shirts.
The T-shirts are really nice.
All right, on to old business. No, there's nothing under old business, sorry, I thought it was going to be on the next page. New business. So we're going to go with 2019, 2020 opening school report and now I'll pass it back to Dr. Cron.
Thank you, thank you. So overall, throughout the district, it's been a smooth and efficient opening of school. From day one, as I reported two weeks ago, the children and adults returned to school with enthusiasm. That's what I saw on everyone's face as I went around to the buildings and it continues to be there even in week three now. So congratulations to our administrators and our teachers. I met with some teachers after school today and I told them, I know that it's hard to begin the school year, that there are a lot of things that you're trying to get ready to start the school year and you not only have to be ready, but you have to be ready to greet the kids, which means you can't be sweating and worrying about how things are going to go. You have to really have your act together. So to have a smooth start means that a lot of people have done a lot of work to be ready. So I give them a lot of credit for that and I want to thank them for that. Rockland High School, just a little bit of news from each of the schools. Rockland High School started a freshman mentoring program this year, which you mentioned. Each freshman has been assigned a mentor and the program has been going well and upper classmen are checking in with their mentees. Principal Harrison would like to remind parents that this Wednesday, 9:18, is back to school night and it begins at 6:30 PM. At Rogers Middle School, approximately 100 kids attended their student government information meeting and approximately 45 students attended instrumental rental night. So we're off to a, a great start at the middle school. Jefferson School had its first annual Jefferson Block Party Cookout on August 15th and over 200 people attended. I put the cheese on the, on the burgers. 16 staff members volunteered to help with the cookout from 5:00 to 6:00 PM that night and everyone came together and it was a great night. It was a lot of fun. Also, the Jeffersons' open house was full with more than 200 attendees. Parents and students were able to visit classrooms and then head to the gym for information from the specialists, from the PAC, from the building committee, from food services and interventionists, as well as the local boys and Girl Scout troops. At the Esten School, the first two weeks, teachers are working to establish classroom communities, so they are following the guidelines of responsive classrooms, first six weeks of school. It's a program that they put together. Teachers are reviewing expectations in all areas of the school, including lunch, recess, assembly, the hallways, the buses, while they're trying to develop rules for their class. So it is students' first exposure in many cases to the democratic process, where the teacher actually talks to them and they play a part in making up classroom rules. So they're learning how to be kind, how to earn pause, and how to work collaboratively. The kindergarten at Esten and across the district, they began implementing PBS, which is a form of PBIS, but it's for younger students. So we're using it in our pre-K and we're using it in kindergarten. It's just rolling out this year in kindergarten. The framework includes teaching skills and social emotional development, where students develop friendships and can practice being problem solvers. Principal Smith said that, quote, "Our district kindergarten teachers felt that teaching school-wide expectations across each setting should be taught slowly." So what they're doing is they're taking lunch and their specialists in their classrooms. So we're piloting that in Esten and trying that out for the first couple of weeks with the kindergartners, just trying to get them comfortable. According to Principal Smith, this is the smoothest opening we've had here in my six years and she attributes it all to her amazing staff and to responsive classrooms, PBIS, and students knowing routines that are consistent from year to year. According to Principal Jan Sheehan, Memorial Park has had a smooth opening for all grades. Principal Sheehan rode the bus with kindergarten to and from school on the first and second day, gave her an opportunity to connect with families. The night of August 29th, Memorial Park held its open house and it was very well attended. There were informational tables manned by community and school members set up in the hallway, with community and school members sharing information about the school building project, Boy Scouts, Title I reading, STEAM, PAC, and our nurse and adjustment counselor had attendance pledges which families signed. And finally, the Rockland preschool had a great start to their school year and Rockland daycare, as you know, never stopped, except they moved, but they too have had a smooth opening. So congratulations again to the daycare for managing their transition to and from Memorial Park and thank you to Memorial Park for being so accommodating and welcoming. Well done. So overall, it has been an exceptionally smooth opening, but most important thing, if you remember anything from this report, there are a lot of smiling kids and a lot of smiling adults in these classrooms and that's, that's really the most important thing. So I'm happy to see it and it's not just on the way into school, but it's on the way out of school, too. So it's been a very, very smooth start to school this year. And that is my opening of school report.
And any, I mean, they started a week early, the most, most of it.
Yes.
Yeah, any feedback on that?
I didn't, I didn't hear any.
I didn't hear any.
I didn't hear anything. I didn't hear anything negative. I think people will be happy in June.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, you know, point out.
I think a lot of people from other towns wished they had started earlier.
Yeah.
They get out so much later.
I think it's six and one half dozen or the other, whatever that saying is. They go to the almost, you know, July in the summer, they're not happy about that.
You didn't start till-
Last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, last, yeah.
Somebody's first day of school picture today and I was like, huh? Who started now?
Yeah. And it is, it does make a difference. I mean, I participated in the, you know, with my grandkids here and I'm, you know, asking them and they didn't have any issue with it either, you know, and, you know, ready to go back to school and it seemed like you, exactly what you said. And working with them and they said, you know, they're all, you know, they're happy to be back in school, you know? I think the summer does wear. I'm happy to be back in school, too.
Well, I know you expect a positive, happy report from the superintendent, but it honestly is a very, it's great to see. It's great to see the kids coming back with, happy to be there. I talked to you already about the first day of school because our first meeting two weeks ago was on the first day of school, but it's still sticking in my mind, some of the stories that I heard from some administrators and teachers about the kids and the things that they had to say about their start of school, so it's been very positive.
I see that, too. Thank you.
On to the preliminary enrollment numbers.
Okay. So you received in your packet, class sizes. I'll just read this for the public. This is as of August 29th. Memorial Park currently has 291, as of August 29th, they had 291 students. The Esten, 324. The Jefferson, 274. Rogers Middle School at 746 and Rockland High at 606. I would draw your attention to our school choice numbers, which as of the ti- as of August 29th, were 86, but we are currently at 88, I know today, as of today. Now, these numbers are changing. So today, Mrs. Penny helped me and gathered some data right from the schools and I will tell you that those numbers have gone down a little bit because people will sign up for a spot, but then just not show up. So that happened a little bit. But then I pulled the numbers from right out of X2 and I'll tell you that in general, it's safe to say that we are up between 60 and 70 students this year. So that is a very positive thing for us as a district to be, to see an increase.
And there seems to be even distribution there, too. You know, a little bit higher on Esten, but everything else, yeah.
Yeah.
And that grade four in Esten.
Grade four is a big class.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going into, yeah.
I mean, grade, grade six is a massive class. Yep.
Right. I have a sixth grader. It is a big class, but they don't know they're a big class. They, that's all they know.
Yeah.
You know?
But, you know, it's pretty, it's within the ranges, though. I mean, you know, but-
Well, they're very fortunate. We have very fortunate class sizes.
Yeah.
Right.
Very agreeable class sizes.
Not counting kindergarten, we have 712 kids in the elementary school.
That's good.
Right.
Eight eighty-nine with kindergarten. It's a good sized kindergarten class, too.
Tell me, Dr. Ruffly, how many kids have we lost, meaning to other schools?
I can tell you that, I believe the number that we lost to the voc this year was 26.
Mm-hmm.
Higher?
About 30.
About 30, okay. So it was at 26 at one point. So we lost 30 to voc and that's much better than the 70-plus that we lost last year.
Yes.
So as freshmen, you mean?
Correct.
As freshmen.
Correct, yeah. But we've had others that have moved out, but then some that have moved in.
Yeah, okay.
Sort of a wash.
And the parochial schools and the charter schools, they're all pretty much the same as they-
Pretty much the same.
We had some, we have the town that's still staying in schools.
Yeah, true.
Right, right. By school choice, yeah.
That's a-
Good.
I'm going to say, if we build it, they will come.
Yeah, yay, you know?
Yeah, we have some nice buildings now. We got another one coming in there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we got some very good programs that we offer.
And we have the best teachers on the planet.
Right.
Roger that.
Best school committee, I mean, right.
Well.
On to transportation.
Transportation. So this comes before you because with an increase in our enrollment numbers, we've also seen a sharp increase in the number of requests for busing. What I am recommending to the committee is that we put on two additional buses. With the, with this again, sort of perfect storm of requests, we go back to sort of what is our, what is our mission, what is our thinking about transportation? I think on a very, very basic level, we want to get kids to school.
On track.
And there are some, and safely. There are some kids who may not make it to school and if they did, it would be very irregular attendance if we didn't have busing. I'm particularly worried about kids who are over by Home Depot and, or, or in areas that are, that are quite far away from the school. And I think there are a number of high school and middle school kids who at this time are not on a bus that we'd like to get on a bus.
Right.
So I'm recommending to the school committee that we add two more buses. I have Mr. Robbie Goggan from First Student, who is our liaison, and he's here and can answer questions if you have any specifics that I can't answer. And Jane also knows quite a bit about all of this as well.
Come, we all asked Patty our bus question.
Number one.
But we can't ask Patty because she's-
Do you want to come up to the podium? Thank you.
No, she's taking notes.
Because she's taking notes, so she's not allowed to-
Number question, one question, Doctor, is how much do the two buses cost? They still cost what, somewhere around $75, $80,000 apiece?
We, we're, we're sort of budgeting about 75 apiece.
75, okay.
Yeah.
So what's that give us for total?
They come in less, though.
$150?
No, for the year. I know 75 plus 70, so.
Yeah.
Yearly for all the buses.
I'm not finding fault with what you are recommending or anything, but I just, I question how, how are you going to pay for it?
That's an excellent question and it's one that I put to Jane about three or four days ago and she's been working on what we call breakage, which is the difference in And she's been working on what we call breakage, which is the difference in the cost of the teachers who retired or left us last year versus the cost of the teachers that we hired. And we think we have enough in breakage to cover that. So that is our plan at this point.
We have numbers. Will you, will you tell us the numbers? There is a lot of children, students, on the waitlist. This is sort of what started this conversation.
That's right.
Was that the, I was hearing, and I think they were hearing, a lot of going on about the waitlist and that students, particularly high school students, weren't getting onto the buses because they were trying to bus the elementary and the middle school, which is the priority.
Which is the law, yeah.
So when Jane pulled us some numbers, which you have, do you have your numbers?
Yes, it's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. We're right around eight hundred now. We'll be, we'll be hovering a million dollars for transportation for the upcoming year, which is less than five percent, you know, of our overall budget. But it is a pretty large absorption this early in the year. We're only one payroll in. One full payroll in to the year.
It'd be a higher increase.
What is, what is the waitlist, that number?
It's like seventy or eighty-seven students that were on the waitlist.
It was a bit more than that. We were hovering at the beginning of the waitlist at about a hundred and sixty students.
Oh, okay.
So that's a lot of students to not have on buses that are far away.
Right.
Yeah. I know a lot of towns charge per student.
We do. We, we charge.
I know you do for the waitlist, but you do charge...
Every state.
Oh, anything in two miles, yeah.
Roughly, what do you charge?
But we're only collecting, we're only taking in receipts.
We're projecting with the addition of adding on the, with the new students onto the bus, we're only gonna receive about twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. It's free and reduced predominantly. So, last year, we were able to pay one bus payment of about sixty-three thousand dollars with our revolving account. We won't be able to do that this year. We don't have that kind of money in it. We didn't receive it. The balance had, had built up. This is gonna be right off the regular budget.
But you're still working on the numbers?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'm still working on the numbers.
I'll make a motion. I think we should, we need to do it.
I think we need to do it. I hate to say it, but I do think we need to.
There's one other, I'll let you vote, and then I can, unless you want to hear it first.
May I hear it first?
There's one other benefit, there's one other benefit. Currently, students from Memorial Park can spend as long as 50 minutes on the bus. Their routes are very lengthy, so by adding, adding these buses, we can do some reorganization, and we should be able to cut those travel times down.
And parents had one child on the bus and one child not on the bus. So then they're standing at the bus stop, but then needing to drive the other child.
You can't have that.
This sort of makes it, you know? And then come the weather, they're not, you know, getting driven.
I'll second Dick's motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All right, go ahead.
How, speaking of transportation...
Did everyone vote?
Oh, did we?
He abstained, he's not in.
Okay. Did, how are we doing with the transportation company? Since we've had a meeting with them and so on, are things progressing in it? I know he is, I'm not asking him. I know what he'll say, okay? I'm asking the people that are paying the bill.
We've been very happy with, particularly working with Robbie. He's done a great job for us. We appreciate it.
Good.
I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, I, I think the relationship has significantly improved over the course of, of the last year. I think Mrs. Penny works extremely hard.
I know she does.
Has a up-to-date knowledge of everything going on in the district and is in lifetime with Mr. Goggan, you know, on a daily basis, and with the, the bus drivers, et cetera. I just, I just want to let you know, this is, the vote happened. It's going to take a tremendous amount of work to implement. And we're gonna need some additional patience from parents and students. We are basically going to have to reroute the entire system.
What timeframe do you think?
So we have new, new buses, new bus passes, new routes, new times, et cetera. It's gonna be a very condensed period of time that we're trying to redo what Mrs. Penny and Mr. Goggan did over the course of pretty much the whole summer.
What timeframe do you think? Tomorrow, afternoon, at noon?
Typically, to, to route a town this large, it takes about three weeks. I was able to do it pretty much all weekend, so we're just about complete. I sent the routes over to the team. One of the things that I paid especially close attention to is, I don't want there to be a huge disruption for the students or the parents. So what we did was, when we restructured the town, because I wish it was as simple as just adding two new buses in. Unfortunately, when you add two into the scramble, you have to restructure everybody. So what we did was, the zones that they were in, we kept those existing buses. So parents that enjoy their driver, they're going to get the same driver typically. They're gonna get the same stops. There may not even be a significant time change. We're hoping that there's a variance of maybe two to five minutes at the most. So the routes are done there with Ms. Penny now. And as far as that, it's on when you guys would like to start. Our tentative date is, we're hoping to begin around the 16th, next Monday. We have the staff on standby, we have the vehicles, and we have all lettering and all radio equipment to make sure that we've got everything. Just about here, where in the next couple of days, we'll have everything, we'll get the buses lettered, and we're hoping for a very smooth transition.
Okay, so it's not a phasing thing, it's...
It will all start at once, yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's important, you know?
Yep, yeah, so everything will start at once. Ms. Penny will be working especially hard on getting those bus passes squared away.
I know, I know. And we'll communicate with the parents.
Yeah, we're gonna look, we're gonna look at all the requirements of the rollout in the next couple of days and decide if Monday is doable or not. The last thing I want to do is have confusion on Monday, because we'll, no matter how well we do it, there's gonna be a certain amount of confusion.
Right. And we've, I think this has only really been on your plate for not even five days, for all of the footwork that you guys have been doing.
Right.
Could we get maybe a bi-monthly report on how we're doing with the contractor as far as how they're performing? I know sometimes we get into messes, not so much with the day-to-day, but you have buses going here to there for athletics and whatever else. And sometimes the buses don't show, sometimes they're late.
On-time percentages.
They, somebody, somebody doesn't call in sick, and the bus isn't there, that type of thing. So I just, we'd kind of like to know that we're taken good care of. It's a lot of money, instead of a million dollars. We need to know that everything is running smoothly.
Do you have a performance report that you, you know, that you produce?
So I can definitely produce something. One thing regarding that is, you are correct, there were definitely issues in the past. I came in here in April in this position. One thing I want to say is, I have family that live in the town of Rockland. My niece is hopefully transitioning into one of the elementary schools soon. And I have drivers that their students went there as well, or their children rather. I'd like to see First Student not as just a contractor, but a community partner. I hear my drivers when we're in the office talking about, you know, how the Bulldogs doing their game, looking at the driver that may have transported them. These drivers, it's more than just a job. It's more than just a career to them. And I feel the same exact way. So I've worked very hard with everybody here in Rockland to restore that relationship. We've got some parameters that we put in place as far as school trips. We've set back our own times, so if you're expecting a bus at three o'clock, we're gonna get there earlier. We want that peace of mind. Our trips are confirmed with the transportation, with the athletics department. They always call us, let us know it's been great. As far as the first day of school rollout, we have spares that are on standby at all times, so there's no, this kid should have been picked up 10 minutes ago, whereas our bus, we're already on it. We've got a key control system. We know as soon as, you know, if that driver's out, if that driver hasn't shown, there's a driver in a bus that has a 100% accurate copy of that route, and those students are serviced. And they see no delay, so. It's only been a few months with me in charge, but I'm really hoping for a successful future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, my, my granddaughter was really happy to see Al as her driver.
Yeah.
I loved Al.
I don't know, I'm a walker, so I don't know the buses. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Any, he's walking, no one had any more questions? Oh, okay.
No.
No, sorry. I wanted to make sure before you sat, we didn't make you get back up. Fundraisers are our next item. Class of 2020 t-shirt sales for October. Class of 2020 Yankee candle sales in September and October. Music boosters, Chipotle night in September. Class of 2020 cookie dough sale, October and November, so.
What, four? Four motions?
Four seconds.
All those in favor? And the high school student, school committee representative is the very own Maddie here. Welcome. I thought it was funny to put you at the end. She's been sitting here, and we didn't get to greet you earlier, so thank you. I'm excited to have you. I feel like we've gotten to know you a little bit, and I'm excited. I think that you're gonna bring great personality to the table.
You have any questions for us?
No, I'm good.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
So my name is Madeline Gier. I'm a senior at Rockland High. I am the president of the school's travel club, vice president of student government, secretary of NHS, and captain of the Barstee lacrosse team.
Good.
And that's your five-time job, right?
And then she's a student.
And you still have time to act as a grad?
Yeah.
Good, good. What are you gonna do next year, you know?
Well, I hope to be attending a four-year university. Which one, I'm not sure quite yet.
Yeah, you, you, in a couple of weeks, you could tell us. Not pushing your eyes. Thank you.
Well, welcome. Don't be shy. And then we have our out-of-state field trip to University of New Hampshire for band day.
I think that's great.
I do, too. I think it's very cool. I think it gives the band students something to sort of look forward to and see the big picture.
How far from New Hampshire, oh, University of New Hampshire?
U and H, hour and a half.
Not so bad.
Not bad.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? And then, lastly, we have our Guatemala service trip. Dr. Harrison and Ms. Shaughnessy. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Harrison with Ms. Shaughnessy, department head for World Language. We're here to present the fourth trip proposal to Guatemala. We've had three successful trips there over the past three years, our fourth year. I'll let Ms. Shaughnessy tell you, answer any questions about the trip. But before I do that, I just want to say, each year, I can't tell you how much positive feedback I get on this trip from students and parents, the chaperones that go. It's a life-changing experience, and it's one of those experiences after the trip, sometimes you don't hear about how it went, but I hear from every kid, and the parents send me those emails after the experience, and it's just remarkable what the kids learn from it. So that's a tribute to the chaperones for bringing the experience to the students. But without further ado, I'll let Ms. Shaughnessy answer any questions. She's happy to go over any changes, when the trip is, anything you'd like. But maybe if you could just talk a little about when the trip is and how many kids are going to February.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for having me again tonight. I always am really excited to come to these and tell you guys about all the great work that our kids do in Guatemala, and kind of walk you through the process of how the trip is planned. So just a little bit, just like Dr. Harrison said, it's gonna be our fourth trip, pending approval. I'm hoping to take 15 students with three chaperones. Depending on the numbers, I'm looking at two, possibly three returning student leaders, but it'll depend how many applications we get turned in. I'm hoping to take the children over April vacation, but we're planning on having all of the dates aligned with the vacation, so they wouldn't miss any school. Typically, we go Saturday to Saturday, so they get the day Sunday before coming back to classes to kind of regroup and get themselves together before transitioning back in. Other than that, the accommodations are the same. The itinerary is the same that we've used over the last couple of years. Budget is pretty much the same. That's, that's pretty much it.
Are you attending?
I am planning on it, yeah.
And then there's, well, if you have male students, you'll have a male chaperone as well?
That's the only hiccup I'm having right now, is finding a male teacher or a coach that is available to go. Right now, it's myself and another Spanish teacher, Jackie Tabarez, who's a native speaker of the language as well. I have four other female teachers who are ready to go, but I understand taking the male students, having the male chaperone, so I'm hoping to find one over the next couple of weeks.
Do you have a max number of students?
I really think that probably 15 would be the tops. We don't ever want to have more than, like, a higher ratio. What's different about any other trip that Rockland Bulldogs do is that in this trip, the students are supervised 100% of the time. So I really wouldn't feel comfortable taking any more than 15 without adding an additional chaperone, which would then increase the cost to the children.
What about medical coverage?
So, do you mean in terms of insurance or in terms of what's available?
Well, insurance, but also down there, you know, I've made trips to Honduras and stuff like that, and I'm ever getting sick, and I'm going down to the local grocery store to get medication, you know?
Right, so...
And that's just a, you know, just the, you know, look, that's the way, that's the way they do it now.
100%. In terms of over-the-counter medication availability, it's just like how it is here. It's a five-minute drive to CVS, it's a five-minute drive to the pharmacy to pick up any Pedialyte, any over-the-counter medication. Worthy Village also partners now and runs a clinic that's about 10 minutes away from the accommodations, that has a doctor on site for normal business hours. And then for emergency care, there's a hospital about 20 minutes away.
From where you are?
Exactly.
You've never had to use those hospitals, have you?
Absolutely not, no. We have, I believe the last trip, there was a pink eye incident, and that was handled at the clinic within five minutes. It was very simple.
Do you have a place, a system in place, that if something did happen, how you would get them, or how we would be able to communicate with you there, and that sort of thing in case of emergency? We know that emergencies happen, and I think that's my biggest fear of sending you, is that, how do we get you home if we needed to? It is a third-world country. I love the idea of you going, I love the knowledge and the experience that they're gonna learn, but it does make me nervous that you're in a third-world country with our Bulldogs.
100%.
And what if I can't get you out?
No, and I, I appreciate that, that sentiment so much. To answer your question, the kids are triple-covered by insurance. Worthy Village purchases two insurance packages, and then we also moved to Travel LX, or we would move to Travel LX this year, which is different from Travel Guard, which would allow us evacuation coverage in the event of an emergency. Anybody's injured, the entire group would be evacuated, which is covered under Travel LX as well as Patriot Insurance, which is what Worthy Village purchases on behalf of the children as well.
Okay.
In terms of, oh, sorry. In terms of contact, all chaperones would be purchasing a global cellphone plan, which would enable us to be in touch with anybody as well as receive calls. The children typically sign up for the plan as well, because I think it's like $10 a day on their cellphone plan. But obviously, the chaperones do purchase it. Additionally, the CEO or whatever Worthy Village representative is with us, they also have a Guatemala cellphone that is globally connected, so they're constantly available.
Okay.
Okay. The only issue is, what I'm looking for is, it's nice that you have the insurance, but do you have the assets in order to evacuate somebody from there?
In terms of the contact and how, how the process works?
Physically.
No, physically. You know, if I need to get a helicopter there, how do I get one?
Right.
How do I get a truck there? Or how do I get any vehicle? What do you, we, how do you obtain those assets that you need to use?
So through the, through the insurance company, they come with all of the contact information. I'm happy to get very specific points from them for the, for the next meeting, I'm assuming, in terms of how that entire process works. But they have, I believe what I had read in this new policy is a 12-hour turnaround at the most. But in an absolute emergency, if somebody's very, very ill, then the insurance coverage would, it would cover the plane tickets that we purchased for the runout.
Not even that. If I have somebody that, that's injured, you know, being, being in the military, I know, I know how to get assets to those, those people right away, you know, because I know where they are. You know, where do you find those assets? That's all I'm asking. If you need a helicopter to evacuate somebody, who do you call? You pick up the phone and say, hey, I need a helicopter, and it's 300 miles away?
Yeah, that's a, that's a super fair question. If it's comfortable and okay with the board, I'd love to reach out to the, to the specific company and ask that.
Yeah. And find out what the wait times would be for, where the assets might be, how much time is, because, you know, in any of those areas, or even around here, you know, you get, you get a bad storm, you can't get that plane up there. How do you get a truck there? How do you get an ambulance there? You know, what's the...
Just to chime in is, having been to Honduras myself on a service learning trip, the response time isn't gonna be as fast as if this was in Europe. Ms. Shaughnessy can definitely get you that information. But to expect the response time to be as fast as it is in Italy, it's probably not gonna be the same.
I, I realize that. All I'm saying is that there's a difference between, you know, our response time here, where I can pick up the phone, and I live, you know, two blocks away from the fire station, and I expect, you know, probably within five minutes, they're gonna be there.
Right.
A ten. But, but what I'm saying is that they're out there, you pick up the phone, they might be saying, hey, the nearest ambulance is 75 miles away. Okay?
I'm gonna...
And that might be good.
You just said the hospital's 20 minutes away.
Yeah, but even still, you still have to get them there.
Has the hospital moved? Because the last time I asked that same question, it was like 40 minutes away.
No, I believe that the hospital that's been listed on the application has always been 20 minutes.
And this is the same hotel?
Same hotel.
Okay.
I'm gonna check the hotel.
It's a great question.
Okay, yeah, just, just see what the assets look like, you know? Because if they have, you know, a storm or something like that, you see what's going on.
Just to be the skunk at the lawn party, which I always am every year.
I love it.
I will never vote for going to a third-world country. I've been to several of them in my lifetime. And you just never know. You can promise everything, and I believe everything you've said.
That's okay.
And I know anything can happen anywhere, but from what I've seen in my experience, if it's gonna happen, more have to happen in a third-world country. I just can't accept sending our kids, and I'll never vote to send our kids, to a, to a place like that until they want to make that decision themselves, not their parents themselves. And then it's all on them. And I mean, when they're of age to make that decision.
I understand completely. To speak to your point a little bit, this trip has taken forty students over the last three years. Individual kids with five students being repeat student volunteers. As of today, fourteen of those students have rebooked trips on their own, of their own volition, with their own money to come back and work with us or work with Worthy Village.
I'm not disputing it's been a great experience for those kids that have gotten through it.
Yeah.
What I worry about is there may be one or two or three that don't get through it. God forbid, because I couldn't live with myself. So as I say, nothing against you. I know you've done more than your share of homework on this. I know the kids have had good results. But I'll never vote, I don't care whether it's Honduras or East Osho, I'll never vote for a third-world country for kids to go there. It's way up my throat.
Thank you.
I think in the past, we had, when Mr. Biggins was here, we had voted that we needed to have a rep come in order to send the students out. So I was hoping or thinking that we would table this for tonight, and that would give you all a chance to get a rep to come back.
And some of the information too.
Just, right, and some of your answers.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. Thank you guys so much for having us.
Motion to the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you. Al, look forward to it.
Patty, Mike abstained from that one.
No, I said no. It's a table. I didn't abstain. We're asking questions about helicopters. We've had this multiple times. It's the first time someone's asking about a helicopter. I mean, you're talking about kids being forced to go. These are fifteen kids who give up their school vacation to go on a trip to better themselves and better other people. I don't know why we're saying, you know, it's their parents, and I can guarantee you, those fifteen kids who went last year, oh, they were here with their parents, telling them how great, with their parents saying how great it was. So I, you know.
Have you ever been to one of those places?
No, I haven't. I wasn't fortunate enough to go.
To try it.
So I would love to. I haven't, you know, these options weren't available to me when I was in this school.
I think we're in the other side.
Actually, traveling anywhere when I was in this school wasn't an option. Okay? But these kids want to go and do better things and help people who are less fortunate, and I think that's amazing. And they're giving up their school vacation to do that. And they are, to me, things happen, whether it's Rockland, or Waymouth, Quincy, New York City, Australia. You want to talk response times? Different parts of Australia, there's response times issues. There's response times issues when the kids go to the islands of Greece and Sicily. So, you know, I don't, I think it's, you know, I mean, where were the questions on helicopters the last three times we've sat here and done this?
Mrs. Raffalo, I think that we're a table of five. We all have our five opinions. That's why there's five of us, or there would just be one of us. Right, so I appreciate your opinion. I appreciate Mr. Mills's opinion, Mr. Phelps. That's why we're here. So we voted to table it. Thank you for telling us how you feel. I appreciate that too. I'm gonna move on to public service announcements. We normally start with ladies first. Are you ready to go first, Ms. Geer?
So Rockland High Student Government has started off the year very successful. We had a camp in August where we welcomed our incoming freshman members. It was a really great way to start off the school year. We are also really excited because we have announced that we are having a unified pep rally instead of the traditional pep rally, which will happen in October. So it's happening October first, so we're really gonna focus on Bulldog Buddies and the Pathway Program, so we're gonna make it as inclusive as we can. One Rockland has bought the whole high school white shirts, so we can all have support. It's gonna be an awesome day. And then, which will give us time to prepare for our class pep rally, which will happen in November.
Awesome.
Very exciting. Yeah, it sounds like a fun time. Ms. Harrison?
I like it.
I would just like to say, welcome, Maddie. I think you're gonna bring a lot to the table. You're very involved in a lot of activities, so I think it's gonna be great to have a student's opinion and get to know you over the next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome also, and I'm just glad that school started. And, you know, and like I said, my grandchildren were really, really happy to go back to school, which, that was, that was nice, and they come back with good reports and what they're doing and everything else. And, you know, I'm excited for them. And so that means I'm excited for the rest of the students in the, in our school systems.
Okay.
And thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
I don't have anything other than to welcome Maddie. I, I thank a lot of you, I love what you've accomplished so far. I enjoy what you've done, and I look forward to working with you this year.
Mr. Raffalo?